Going to call our Tuesday, February 25th, 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, united in its fold, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one selectman out. I think one selectman is on her way in. And we have Dawn Alkenbright remote, so we're going to do a roll call. Eric here.
Missy here.
Dawn Alkenbright here.
All righty. So I have a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair at this time. Seeing nobody. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the selectman's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. Also, please check the website for any additional events or notices. Also, it's, I believe, folks can still pull papers for positions. And we have a few positions, and those are also listed on the website, various committees and boards that are elected. And our town election will be in May, so if you're interested in running for a seat, just reach out. We'll take a look at the website and reach out to our town clerk. All right, at this point, we'll do open forum. Is there anybody who wanted to speak tonight during open forum? Nobody? Oh, go ahead.
I'm not quite sure what that entails.
Oh, if you just wanted to make any public statement, you can't ask questions because it's not something necessarily that's on our agenda. But if, you know, if there was something coming up that we were going to vote on that you were interested in, you could certainly go up there and give us your opinion. Or, you know, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and other groups may come in and just make an announcement that they want folks to see online on the recordings and whatnot. So anybody want to speak? Anybody online have their hands up? Okay. A couple of weeks ago when we were talking about school overrides, we had a lot of parents and teachers who wanted to speak, so that was an example of what open forum is for, just for folks to make their voices heard.
And hi, sorry, I would like to speak, Eric. Sorry, I didn't get to raise my hand enough quickly enough. It's Jackie Giovinangelo of Franz Lane. We're part of, myself and other parents are part of, you know, an initiative to get parents aware of the budget conversations for this upcoming year. I wanted to confirm whether or not today there would be any budget discussions regarding the schools. It wasn't totally clear in the agenda, so we just wanted to confirm whether or not we need it today because we thought our presence was not needed and no discussions would be occurring until the 6th.
That's correct. The Silver Lake School Committee, actually, they had a joint meeting at 5:00 to go over their shared budget. And then 6:00 Silver Lake is at meeting right now, hopefully to vote a budget for themselves. And then the Kingston School Committee is meeting on Monday, and they will hopefully vote a budget. And then we'll be having our meeting on Thursday, on the 6th.
That is our, was our impression, but I just wanted to verify because we did not advertise for people to come to this one because we thought it was delayed till later, and I'm glad that is the case. So thank you, and we will all be around for those next meetings, for those discussions.
And I apologize, we've changed that meeting so many times, but, you know, we're just waiting for final information and hoping that more money was coming from the state, and in fact, some did. So it will reduce the amount, hopefully, of any override, so it was all for a good reason. We weren't doing it to try to throw people off the trail.
Yep, no, we definitely understand. It's better to have more information and all the information than have the meeting then. So I just want to, we just got word last minute that maybe budget discussion was happening today, and we just want to verify it isn't. So since it isn't, thank you, and we'll talk next week.
All right, thank you.
Have a good meeting, everyone. Bye-bye.
Anybody else wanted to speak? No? Okay. Our appointments. First off, we have introduction of permanent intermittent police officer William Glenn. Chief, did you want to, I hate to ask you to speak. I know you don't like it.
That's a great question, a question of the ages. Good evening, honorable members, Mr. Hickey, Ms. Tucker. You should have in your packet a conditional offer of employment that was shared. I'm pleased to introduce to the honorable board, Mr. William Glenn. He's here with his daughter Kennedy. She has a dad to be proud of. Mr. Glenn's 38 years old. He's a resident of Hanover. He's a former resident of Summoner Street, Kingston. He's a 2004 graduate of Catholic Memorial High School, and he might have played hockey there. He's an '09 graduate of Salem State University, and I'm pretty sure he played hockey there, too. He holds a bachelor's science degree in criminal justice. He's currently employed by the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department as a full-time deputy sheriff. He's been there since 2001. Prior to that employment, he served as a reserve deputy sheriff for the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department. He left that employment for full-time commitment to the Plymouth, I mean, the Suffolk County Sheriff. So the next steps of the process would be pre-employment screening, physical agility test, medical examination. And then from there, he'd be sworn in by the clerk. Honorable board, have any questions for Mr. Glenn?
Any questions? And it looks like, did we have Kim join us? Okay. Dawn, do you have any questions or comments? All right, well, welcoming, congratulations. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. That qualifies as the definition of brief.
That was brief. Thanks, chief. All right, next up is a public hearing for street acceptance for Jones River Estates, Captain Jones Way, Barrows Brook Circle. I'm going to read the notice. The Kingston Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing at the Kingston Townhouse, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Mass. On Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, at 6:00 PM to discuss acceptance of Captain Jones Way and Barrows Brook Circle, part of Jones River Estates, as shown on a plan entitled As-Built Road Plan, Jones River Estates, Captain Jones Way and Barrows Brook Circle, Kingston, Mass., prepared by McKenzie Engineering Group, dated July 18th, 2024. The plan may be viewed prior to the meeting, the Board of Selectmen's office, during regular business hours. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye.
Missy, aye.
Dawn, aye.
All right, we are open. Keith, do you want to, did you want to start off?
Sure, so the residents of Captain Jones Way and Barrows Brook Circle reached out to the town, more specifically, primarily to Val Masard, our town planner, looking for the process that would need to be used to have those roads considered at a town meeting for acceptance as a town road. Valerie has, and Sean, our interim Streets, Streets and Parks superintendent, have worked with representatives from the neighborhood to get them to this point. One of the requirements that the policy has to have a road accepted is to have a public hearing. That's what this, that checks this box. There's still some work that needs to be done that will assist with, assist the property owners with moving forward. In a perfect world, if we can get everything squared away in a timely manner, they've got until March 28th, I think, when the, when the warrant closes to get a warrant article included in the annual town meeting warrant. So this evening, Sean is here, Val's here to answer any questions that anybody has. There's, I'm assuming, a number of residents who are here this evening to speak if they need to. And I maybe just ask Sean if he can, so there's, there's a number of things. If the board wants to allow this process to continue, one of the things that would have to, would then occur is there would be a inspection of the road and supporting infrastructure. And if there were improvements of any kind that would need to be, that would need to be made, we would notify the property owners what those improvements would need to be, what the estimated cost of those improvements would be, and then a determination about how that would be paid for by the residents of the roadway, including an option of a betterment. There's percentages that need to be, percentage of property owners that need to be, that need to sign off on, being willing to have a betterment assigned to the property. The one issue that I'm aware, that stands out very candidly, and it may not be the only one, so I want to make sure I'm clear of that, is there's a, obviously, if anybody lives out there, there's a, I'm not sure what you guys call it, a speed bump, a speed, that would have to be addressed. So the, the speed bump that's out there now does not meet spec or town code if, and that would need to be reconfigured, I guess I should say, and Sean is here this evening, he can probably give you a better sense of what that would entail. That would need to be done before, you know, the, either contingent upon town meeting approval or something along those lines to, to have the road become a town road. We, again, we would work with you to identify what the proper repair slash improvement would be, and then try to work with you on identifying a cost and how you guys want to pay for it, and work our way down through the checklist, so to speak, of what has to occur to have your, your road be considered by town meeting. So tonight, if the board wants to proceed after they close the hearing to move to the next step, the next step I believe would be, and Val or Sean can correct me if I'm wrong, would be to, to review the road, and it's, like I said, it's supporting infrastructure to determine if any improvements need to be made to have the road be, be consistent with the requirements of a town, a town road. I don't know, Sean, if you've got anything else, or Val, that you want to add to that?
I've got the traditional flannel so that we recognize this is a highways department. I just want to, Valerie Masard, town planner, just, just kind of adding some context. There's a multiple-step process that goes into play when we look at accepting a private way as a, as a public way. And the first step is filing a petition with the town, which has been done. The next step is this public hearing where the selectmen decide, given the information that they're provided tonight, whether or not they want to proceed any further, and that's what we're here to decide. We have some recommendations to share, and Sean specifically. And then, then we would talk about the next steps from there, as Keith pointed out. And with that, I'm going to just add that the, one of the criteria that we've listed in the policy for you in the policy for you in terms of street acceptance is the connection of two major public streets, which this does provide. It was requested by the police chief at that time and the fire chief because of the difficulty of proceeding through the Cumberland Farms intersection there. It's, it saves a tremendous amount of time in terms of maneuvering and responding to emergencies, and so the subdivision was proposed to the town and the planning board as a cul-de-sac, and it was specifically requested that this road be designed as a connector road. So it does meet the criteria that are suggested to you, although you have your own criteria that you can interject or amend. I just wanted to point that out. Turn it over to Sean.
Good evening. And I just want to talk about the speed hump that's currently up there. Yeah, if you'd like to hand those out. I have more. There's a couple more now, if somebody wants one in the back.
We have a couple of slides.
Yes, please. All right, so currently, you can see in the pictures that it's not up to code. A speed table needs to have a six-foot approach, about a six-foot flat table to eight-foot with a six-foot approach on the other side. What's happening now is the plows are catching it and already destroying it. Also, if you notice close, these cars, lower cars are hitting it, and if we eventually take it over as it is, it could become a liability to the town. You know, a car hits it, rips the exhaust off, we could be held responsible for that. So we're just looking to have it brought up to code. So that basically just describes what a true speed table should be.
Right.
And that's by U, MUTCD code, that's what a speed table should be. Right now, it's nowhere close to that. So.
So I have a question. I probably have a few questions. A, how much would it cost to replace this? And then B, how long do they last, and what kind of ongoing maintenance is this going to cost the town?
The ongoing maintenance shouldn't be much as long as it's done properly. We have some up in Tall Timbers Estates.
Yeah.
Those have been up there for five or six years now, really no maintenance. If anything, it's a little bit of repainting every few years, but that's about it. If they're designed properly, the plows will ride over them and won't destroy them.
So it wouldn't really become an issue until you're repaving?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be fine. And it would stand up to the length of the road as it consists of.
Just add, too, that this is a brand-new road.
Yeah.
It's a brand-new road, so. The roadway itself won't need any work for quite a long time.
That leads me to another question. How, how, how long should it, how often should a road like that be repaved, you know, in these neighborhoods? Is it about every 10 years, 15 years?
Something like that on that type of road, 20.
Okay.
You get about 15, 20 years out of it. Because it's not a high-traffic road, so.
It would become eligible for Chapter 90 funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would. I'm just concerned the way that speed bump is now.
Can I ask a question, too? You mentioned the speed table, or I think that's what we call it now, speed table. Does the road also have to have some type of striping, like lines, or is that part of the checklist?
The road currently does what needs to be.
It does need to, okay.
But when they put the speed table in, it does need certain striping.
Okay.
And I attach that in the, with you guys' folders, what it needs.
Thank you.
My apologies for my tardiness. I was coming from Dana Farber with my mom, and unfortunately, traffic is uncontrollable. I tried to Zoom, but that was not successful. So I apologize.
We saved all the good stuff for you.
If we were to go back a slide, there's, the other thing that Sean is pointing out is that there's signage that isn't there now that we would want to add in order to meet code.
Yeah, by code, you have to have signage.
Yeah, so it wouldn't look like, it wouldn't look like cardboard pasteover sign the way this does.
We're just trying to save money.
It would, it would be an actual, you know, sign, but there'd be two of them on approach in each other direction, so that hopefully that would help people slow down, and it does have the same effect of slowing cars down. This design, it's about three inches higher than the existing pavement with a very gradual approach, allow those plows to go up and over without damaging their vehicles or their plows or the speed table. So we think that it'll be less impactful on cars, but it has the same effect. If you're going too fast, you're going to get a little airborne, and that's not, you know, that's not desirable. The idea is that this is a traffic calming measure.
It's a calming device, yes, it still is. It still falls under code for that. And I also talked to Chief Douglas today, our department head meeting, and it is a little excessive for his fire trucks and ambulances, too.
The current?
The current one, yes. The ones up in Tall Timbers, the way those are set up with the tables aren't such an issue.
Okay. So the, so the cost that we put up on the third slide is our rough estimate of what it would cost based on talking to an engineer today to do the signage, the painting, and the changing of the pavement. And there would be a minimal cost for an engineer to design and oversee the installation of that. And that's the cost that we're looking at with the four signs, the paint, and the asphalt work. This could be even on the high side, so it's really relatively small cost in terms of the long term of, it reduces everybody's liability, and it also will, you know.
Get them accepted.
Yeah, have the road be in a condition for acceptance when, when that's done.
I'm counting 15 or 16 lots there, so it would be about 1,000 per, per property.
A little less than that because there's something like, I'm not sure how many houses, but yeah, roughly.
18.
18.
We went, you know, our engineer gave us a number today, and we.
Oh, yeah, I see the other two.
We went well above that, just to make sure we're, we're giving you guys an idealistic estimate. We think it might be less, but we're trying to, you know, err on the high side so that we're not surprising anyone.
Yeah.
The next step, what would happen if the selectmen decide that they want to move forward, is we would actually get an engineering spec and tell you how much it would cost to hire that engineer to do a, basically, a short design spec of what we just described, and give us a cost estimate, and come back to you and say, can we better you for that amount, or can your HOA pay us for that amount? And then decide whether the town would do this work or whether we would oversee the work and work with your engineer to, to get this done. And then the timing on that is kind of all spelled out in the process, and if you guys are, you, the residents, are okay with that, then the next step would be to come back here, and then the, it would be able to be forwarded to the planning board for their recommendation, and that's the final steps and stages to go towards the town meeting warrant.
Yeah, because I inspected the rest of the room, it's fine. Drain instructions, everything's fine.
Okay, great.
Any, any other questions from the Board? Don, do you have anything?
No, I mean, I'm pretty sure this is the case, but assuming anything that we push forward to town meeting would just be contingent upon this getting done, though, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
I mean, it's a highly trafficked road by the public. I'm sure you guys already talked about this, and it's, I mean, when they talked about it, it was designed as the cut through through, which, again, I'm sure you've already talked about, so it makes sense that it would be eventually accepted by the town.
Right.
And I think the idea of the speed table.
Then we agree, it needs something there, it just needs to be under code.
David Jossi, yeah, 10 Barrows Brook. I just have a question on, when this was put in by the builder, why wasn't something overseen by the town saying, this is the way it should be?
I spoke to the previous superintendent today, and he.
Feel free, just raise your hand. Go ahead. Just state your name and address.
Kyle Little for Captain Jones Way. Just question while we're on this topic of traffic calming and stuff like that. As a, as a resident on the road, and we're right at the end, right at the curve there, just natural observations of people driving through, it's still a little excessive on the speed, especially around 7:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. every Monday through Friday. But, you know, it's, it's concerning at that point because there is, from the design of the road, there's that burn with the trees, and I think it's five Captain Jones across the street there. It's a blind spot in that driveway, around that curve, so wondering, like, if we're in this process right now, and there are recommendations in this same document of, like, spacing of speed tables, you know, if it's, if it's worth looking, you know, is it the second one recommended while we're in this process?
Right now, we were, we were looking at one, but if you'd like us to, you know, we, we can add to the spec if there'd be a second, and the cost would be double, but that's a possibility. The other possibility is that once it becomes a public way, we're able to do speed enforcement on the way, which we're not able to do as a private way, so. And a third option would be to look at grant opportunities, once it's a public way, if it's a public way, to look at necking it down or other options that could be available to try to reduce speeds, so. But we can definitely add that as, as an item to explore.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be a catch point, I think, to, it's a, it's a catch point. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right. What do we think? Do we want to? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Contingent upon.
Oh, we move to close the public.
Do we want to?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that work? So move to close the public hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
Okay.
Any thoughts about approving, not approving? And it certainly can be contingent on, you know.
So the recommended motion before us is approving the request to move to the next step?
Yes, the original warrant, agenda incorrectly stated that it would be putting it on the warrant. However, there's a process in between where we do this, actually getting the actual costs and kind of agreeing to it before we take another step to put it on the warrant.
Sorry, I should have finished. It says the next step to have the town evaluate the proposed layout.
Yeah. Then that's, and we've already done that, but it would be the, so we're kind of speedy, but we would get a real cost back to them as soon as we can if the selectmen want to do that. So we had made a change to the original agenda that you received.
Okay.
So we need to change this, not say for the town to evaluate the proposed layout because we already did it?
Yep. So I guess I can't make that motion because I'm not exactly clear what we're being asked to do, and I missed the beginning, so I just want.
You didn't miss that much, but, but.
Hey, I missed whatever started.
So what we, as Kim said, our, our proposed motion right here is to move to approve or not approve the request from Jones River Estates, HOA to move to the next step, and then this whole next part needs to be redone. It says, "With the road acceptance policy and procedures number five to have the town evaluate the proposed layout." So what do we change the last part to?
I guess what do you need from us?
Yes, proceed, or no, don't proceed, and, and we know what to do next.
Okay.
So we could probably strike everything after next step, well, we would say next step with the road acceptance policy and procedures, and I would.
Yep.
Scratch the, to have the town evaluate the proposed layout.
Makes sense.
That'll be fine.
Okay. Just Keith, Keith, does that work? Okay. Just trying to make sure.
No, I think that's good. As long as Val's happy, I'm happy.
All right, sounds good.
Do you want to make that motion?
No pressure. Sure, I move the Board of Selectmen approve the request from Jones River Estates, HOA to move to the next step within the road acceptance policy and procedures.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, we're good. Thank you.
So we'll be, somebody, somebody will be in contact from the town with the Val or Sean will be in contact with you guys to take the next step, try to identify costs and that type of thing, and we'll work with you from there. Okay?
All right, thanks, folks. We're talking about.
No, for the meeting, you're welcome.
Shellfish licenses.
Always, always.
All right, so the next, next item is a appointment, it's a public hearing, addition of names to the Shellfish Aquaculture license leases, so.
Do you want to give it, like, just?
Yeah. Sounds like they're.
Now you can probably start.
All right. So we had already reviewed this, and we had, we had voted, but after Dan Colvin, our Shellfish Constable, had spoken with the Mass Division of Marine Fisheries, and we needed to have a public hearing to be held to amend the license. So I'm just going to read the public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 130, Section 60, the Kingston Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, at 6:15 at the Townhouse, Room 200, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Mass., to consider the application to add additional names to Shellfish Aquaculture lease Ichabod's Flat Map Number Two, Three Acres, and Map Number Three, Three Acres. The applicants are Thomas Taylor, lease number two, to add the name of Jamie McEnroe to the lease agreement, John Webble, lease number three, to add Matthew Webble to the lease agreement, and the application to add additional names to the existing leases has been filed with the Board of Selectmen's office. So do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
All righty. Dan, you're here. Is there anything you wanted to add, Dan?
Well, I think we've satisfied all the requirements necessary to get this moving forward. We've, we've gone through the public notice, and applications have been filed. I think we're all set to make it happen.
Sounds good. Keith, anything to add?
No, this was, you know, this was a step that we weren't aware of, frankly, two weeks ago, so we're trying to just follow the, the lead of this, of the state, and if the Board is willing to confirm these, then the next step, I think, will be to get these squared away, and then we'll have potentially a new applicant for lease number one coming forward to the Board at some point in the near future.
All right.
After we talked about this last time, I had a couple of members of the public ask about the reporting structure of the Shellfish Constable, so I just wanted to go over that just briefly one more time, so.
What was that?
There were some questions about the reporting structure of the department, the Harbor Master Department, and the Shellfish Constable, and how that works, so I just wanted to be clear to everybody that the Harbor Master reports directly to the police chief, as does the Shellfish Constable. They're two separate branches. We broke them apart, they used to be combined, but now they're not, so I just want to make sure people understand that, 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 those are two separated areas.
Okay.
I just want to make that clear.
No, that's good.
It just, it came up after the last one.
All right, is, is there anybody from the public that wanted to make a comment? Nobody here. Anybody online that wanted to speak? The public hearing, so you're welcome to speak. Anybody from the Board? Any questions, comments? All right, anyone want to make a motion to close the, the hearing?
I move the Board of Selectmen to close the public hearing. Ah, I beat you. Faster than he is. Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
All right.
This is essentially the same thing we voted on before.
It is.
Correct? Okay.
Yeah, so would anybody like to make a motion?
I can do it. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request from the Shellfish Constable to add Jamie McEnroe to lease agreement number two. to add Jamie McEnroe to Lease Agreement Number Two, and Matthew Webble to Lease Agreement Number Three.
Second. Did Don?
I think he said second.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
All right. Next item, related, renewal of razor clam licenses. So, annually, the Board of Selectmen awards the allotted razor clam licenses. Similar to Town Mooring's, razor clam licenses have historically been awarded to the people who had one the previous year, unless they're no longer interested. The Shellfish Constable, Dan Culvin, is recommending reducing the number of licenses this year from 11 to nine, and the names of the folks are listed here. Additionally, we need to establish the fees for the license. And again, the Shellfish Constable initially recommended the rate to remain at 300, but at the request of the town administrator, I can't keep saying Shellfish Constable, completed a survey of Duck Spray, which is $295, and Plymouth 300, to determine their fees. The board also requested the Shellfish Constable to review the bylaw to require a minimum shellfish harvested annually to retain their license. Mr. Culvin stated, with regard to a minimum catch or use it or lose it requirement, he feels it would be a difficult thing to implement, and would like a little more time to explore options. So, any thoughts? Dan, did you have anything you wanted to add to what I just said?
No, I think that would be pretty tough to nail down, because, you know, where do you make the requirement? I mean, it's, you have good days, you have bad days. It's like, you know, I understand if somebody lets it sit for six months and doesn't use it, maybe that's something to think about, but-
Right. So, Dan, this came up, I don't remember how long ago, because there were several people that had licenses that they weren't using, but they still had the license. So, we talked about putting some sort of number requirement, so that they were actually using it. It's something, we can certainly revisit, but Tyler, I think, had strong opinions about that. He's away this week, so maybe that's something that you can talk to Tyler about, what he was thinking, or give you a starting place.
I'm certainly open to suggestion, but at this point, it's kind of a tough thing to just implement right away.
All right. Keith, did you want to add anything?
No, I agree with what Selectman Berg just mentioned. If the board wants to move forward without a minimum at this point, then, you know, bring it back, bring it back a year from now. You know, that might make sense. But I just, to Kim's point, this is an asset to the town. We have a waiting list for these licenses.
Well, no, actually, we don't.
We don't anymore? Okay. We had one last year.
Yeah, we did.
So-
If do, I can't find it, and I've talked to a number of people who disagree that we have one, I can't find one, so.
Okay, so, I mean, the reason, I guess the reason for looking to put some sort of a minimum, and I think it could be exceptionally small amount-
Right.
Is to not, is to not, is to use these licenses. That's why they're four, and if we do get, if we do get a waiting list in the future, you know, we might be able to pass that on to somebody who'd be willing to utilize that license more than-
I would definitely agree. I agree with that, but-
That was the basis for it.
At this point, I mean, last year, we had 11, and two decided not to renew, so brought the count down to nine.
That's what it was, okay.
And, you know, without a waiting list, I can't, I can't imagine why we'd implement a minimum requirement, because there's nobody waiting in the wings.
And I agree with you, Dan, but I think a minimum should be, at some point, I think a minimum should be identified. So, we're prepared, in case, in the late winter, early spring, and we're renewing this every year, if somebody has not used it, the expectation has been identified, and that person, the board, I guess, at that point, with your recommendation, can make a decision whether or not to renew that license for somebody who may not have met the minimum. That's all.
Okay.
So, I have a question. It's about our suggested motion, and I'm sure the dates are wrong. It has July 1, '24 through June 30th, '25. So, I'm assuming-
No, that's right.
Yeah, I'm assuming it should be, is it July 1, 2025, to June 30th?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if it was like March, but I'm just wondering why we're voting on it.
No, no.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, Dan, I don't mean to question you, but so, if it's July 1, the license holders can't fish, you know, until after July, till July 1st? Is that what the intent is?
Well, they should be-
I think they're all current, they're current license holders.
All right, I apologize.
Right, so they're just essentially renewing, like our liquor licenses and whatnot.
So, it'll go to 2026.
But here's a different question. If the licenses don't renew until July 1st, should we wait on voting on it and talk about that minimum thing when Tyler gets back? I know we were trying to do this because Dan was here, and we had the, we already had this, but if we have time, it just makes sense to me to-
Well, we have until, yeah, I mean, if they're not going to start until July 1st, and the existing licenses aren't going to change.
Yeah. Can we push this off a month? And then, that way Tyler and Dan can connect, and then they can come forward with recommendation?
That's fine.
Plus, that'll give me a chance to dig in and see who was on the waiting list the last time we talked about it, because I'm pretty sure we had it.
If you can produce a waiting list, I'd love to see it.
I'll see what we have in the notes from before.
And you reduced 11 to nine because you didn't have any new interest. That was its purpose, right? Did I hear you correctly?
Well, I didn't really reduce anything. I mean, there were 11 licensees the year before last, and two of them didn't renew, so that brought it down to nine.
So, there are 11 available licenses in Kingston?
Well, there should only be 10, I'm not sure how it got up to-
No, they upped it to 11. We had a long discussion about this. I gotta, I have to find that meeting again and-
So, if residents wanted to come forward, we still have room for two more, if we don't have a waitlist?
There was a story behind why it went from 10 to 11, I don't remember what it is right now.
It's okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
She's like, there's a story, do you remember the story? I do. You do remember? Well, I remember it being discussed. Oh, okay. That's what I remember, too.
All right, so we're in a table that's for now?
I think so.
I would like to.
That's fine.
Don, okay with that? Thumbs up.
All right. So, moving on, we have a request from Sandy Harslam to host the MS Cape Cod Getaway Event on June 28th. Request was received to hold the bike event through Kingston, the morning through afternoon of Saturday, June 28th, 2025. The request was sent to police and fire chiefs, along with the interim Superintendent of Streets, Trees, and Parks for review. Their recommendations are in the meeting packet. Are there any questions, comments, or anything you want to add? Keith?
Nope. The conditions for the board to consider are in the motion, and other than that, everybody was satisfied with the application.
Okay. Any questions? If not, a motion?
Yep. I move the Board of Selectmen approve the request by Sandy Harslam to hold the MS Cape Cod Gateway Bike Event through Kingston, the morning through afternoon of Saturday, June 28th, 2025, according to the traffic control plan presented with the following conditions. The MS Cape Cod Gateway successfully acquires the proper permits from Mast dot. MS Cape, sorry, Cod Gateway contacts the Kingston Police Department for the scheduling of detail officers as outlined in the event's traffic plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
All right. Moving on to additional items. All right. We're being asked to consider the KTEU Clerical Union request to establish a four-day work week at the Town House. The KTEU has approached the town requesting to modify the work week at the Town House from a four-and-one-half day to a four-day work week, closing the building on Fridays. Our current versus proposed hours are in the packet, but basically, right now, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Town House is open 8:00 to 4:30. This will change it to 8:00 to 5:00 PM. Tuesday currently is 8:00 to 6:00 PM, and it would continue to be 8:00 to 6:00 PM. Friday would be closed. In the end, total hours worked are 35 either way. So, it would remain open, like I said, till 5:00 PM on Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. And the daily lunch break would be reduced from one hour to a half hour, maintaining a total of 35 hours work per week. The town administrator considers shifting to a four-day work week as a recruiting tool, attracting and retaining individuals for open positions. Towns of Hall and Hingham are two communities that have recently moved to a four-day work week for the same reason. And speaking to the town managers from both communities, there have been very little concerns raised by taxpayers. If the board does support the proposed hours, the administrator recommends new hours begin on July 1st. And we discussed a potential trial period, going from July 1st through the end of December, if it's approved, to see how it works. So, again, you know, Fridays are not very busy in Town Hall, but it does remove some services that might be currently used by folks. I know one of the issues that's been raised before is builders and whatnot coming in for permits and whatnot on a Friday morning, or people who telework from home, who might be coming into Town Hall just to do, take advantage of whatever services are on a Friday morning. It's Fridays and Mondays, I think, are the big telework days. Keith, anything to add here?
No, the only thing I guess I'd add is, one of the things that we're trying to do now is to have a more significant presence on online payments and permitting and things of that nature. We're working on providing online transfer station decal issuances, so you don't have to go to Streets, Trees, and Parks during the week, or the few weekends that it's available. We're also relaunching our building soft, building permit software, so ideally, you know, people who would like to apply for a building permit or like to get a transfer station decal, even those are at Streets, Trees, and Parks, they can do that online. And in my mind, you know, I believe anyways, that staff will be, you know, more incentivized to get these online permits up and running, knowing that the less amount of impact it has to people who come into the town office building to do transactions of some kind. If they can do them in a more convenient setting, online, the less pushback the Board of Selectmen may get when they're reconsidering extending the four-day work week, you know, later on in December. So, happy to try to answer any questions, anybody has.
Any questions?
To be clear, this is not a cost-saving, this is a recruiting and retention initiative, more than anything else.
From my point of view-
Yes.
And the benefit I see for the Town of Kingston is trying to attract qualified people, and if we are able to offer a benefit that some other town may not, that could provide us the reason why a candidate accepts a position with the Town of Kingston. It's, I think it's an absolute benefit, and nobody's, I don't think anybody, especially the people over there and me, are going to suggest to the Board of Selectmen that this is not, you know, a significant benefit to them. It is. But, you know, we're, we, like a lot of companies, are struggling to find qualified employees to fill open spots. And if we, if we have a leg up on somebody by offering this, and the work product is as strong as it is now, it gives us, it gives us, you know, a benefit when a person is considering accepting a position here or some other location.
Thank you.
Sure.
Quick question. Does everybody in town work on Tuesday, 8 to 6?
Townhouse? In the Townhouse.
Yeah, yeah, in the Townhouse.
Yes, everyone in the Townhouse, every department in the Townhouse-
Everybody does.
So, these hours are, the current hours are what everybody works. The proposed hours would be what every employee would work, if it was to change.
All right, any other questions? Don, do you have anything? Kim?
I mean, I struggled with going, doing the half-day on Friday when we initially talked about it. I don't remember at this point when that was. I struggle with it, because it's a resident-facing role. Like, everything in the Townhouse is to serve the folks within the community. So, I just, I struggle with the limited hours, especially when, you know, we have people that do commute to places. I know we can do a lot of things online, which is great. That does help with shortening hours and limiting days, but I don't know, I struggle with this one. I did, I struggled with the half-day, and I have trouble with being closed on Friday, too.
I, I think that the benefit to this obviously is the recruitment process, but also the fact for us that if we do make a motion to accept it, there's a trial period. So, then, we can check back in with residents and ask them if there was a benefit to it, or not, and then make that decision in December. So, I think that's an important piece for us to consider, because I think it's worthwhile if we can attract people here to fill positions we need to. And we have a six-month, I don't know, trial period, I guess is what we're calling it.
How many open positions do we have right now? Do you know, in the Townhouse? It's okay, sorry, I should have asked before now.
It's fine. I mean, I want to say, just a small handful, I mean, very honestly.
I didn't think there were a lot.
There isn't right now. It does vary.
Okay, that's fair.
And retention, too, I suppose.
And this doesn't affect the Council on Aging?
It does not.
And police still work on Friday?
As does Streets, Trees, and Parks, and water, and sewer, and fire.
That's just me being smart.
Yeah.
But the 5:00 is closer to business hours-
Right.
For people that are working, too. To be fair.
I'm more in favor of doing this, especially given the trial period through the end of December, to see how it works.
The only thing that affects me is signing the warrant, which sometimes I have to do till Friday morning.
We're open till 5:00 now on Thursdays. And if you need to come in on Friday, I'm happy to meet you here.
All right.
Starting on July 1st.
You can't sign those online?
No.
We'll get there.
Can I jump in for one second on this?
Yeah.
John Cherst, KTEU president. I just, you questioned the other members from the Council on Aging, Highway, et cetera. This was put out to all of the union members, and the Town Hall members were the only ones that wanted to take advantage of it. So, it was put out to all of the groups to see if it was something that they'd be interested in participating in.
All right, any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I will. I move the Board of Selectmen approve the four-day work week for a six-month trial period from July 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2025, as presented.
Do I have a second? All right. All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
You say opposed? I think that's what you said, you said opposed.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. So, that passed. All right, so we'll start that in July, see how it works. All right, next item is opening the annual Town Meeting Warrant. Includes, we're supposed to open the Town Meeting Warrant today.
Oh, wow. Feels like we did that already. I know we didn't, but it feels like we did that already.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I move the Board of Selectmen open the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, effective February 26th, 2025, at 8:00 AM.
Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
What did I say? Did I say the wrong thing? Oh, okay. Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Next item, create a task force committee for age and dementia-friendly study by the Old Conley Planning Council. Chair of the Council on Aging Advisory Board, Katie Starr, had informed us that Kingston's been awarded a $35,000 grant to conduct the needs assessment for the age and dementia-friendly study by the Old Conley Planning Council. One of the next steps is to have a task force set up to begin the process of designing the study questionnaire. The task force committee will consist of 12 people. Members to be included are as follows. An advisory board representative, emeritus of COA Advisory Board, Kathy Studley. Selectmen representative, to be determined. COA Director, Holly Nageli. Town Planner and/or Town Clerk, Valerie Massard or Paul Gallagher. Emergency Response Representative, Police, Fire, et cetera. Heath Howell is the COA Liaison. Board of Health Representative, Janet Wade, Board of Health Consultant and former Board of Health Member. Representative from BID Plymouth, Karen Peterson. Community member with knowledge of dementia-friendly efforts, Ellen McSweeney. Kingston KBA rep, school rep, clergy or faith group, Tyler DeCoste, Business Manager, St. Mary and Joseph Collaborative. Housing Authority, Neighborhood, Neighbor Works, Housing Solutions. We have DeeDee Rendu, if I pronounce that right, and Julie Lane. Yeah, go ahead.
So, I have not had a chance to watch your meeting yet, Katie, so I apologize. I'm behind on my recorded meetings. Sorry, Katie. I didn't get a chance to watch your meeting yet. I'm behind on my recorded meeting, so I promise I will watch it. With this task force, how are the members selected that are on this list? So, are people nominated? How is that, how is this list sort of pulled together?
So, as far as our board is concerned, we brainstormed who we thought was going to be important voices to be on the task force. Through Holly's help, we've tried to start identifying. So that's, you know, some of the names that are on there are people that, you know, Holly started reaching out to. But you'll see there's a lot of, excuse me, a lot of TBDs on there, too. So, we don't have a complete full list at the moment because we don't have approval of the task force yet. But, you know, we're in the process of identifying who we believe would be important voices to have as part of this task force.
Okay. And is the intention that the task force serves like a working group where it's not a committee, but needs to do the 48-hour posting and the agenda publishing? Or are we thinking it, I guess I'm curious how formal the task force is meant to be, adhering to open meeting law versus sort of more brainstorming and working group? Does that make sense?
It's a good question. I'm actually, my personal take is that it's more of a working group. Joanne, I know we have Joanne Ziegmond on the call. She may be able to give us a better idea of how some of the other towns have, that she's worked with, have done this.
Sure. Hello, good evening, everyone. Both ways, actually. So it really is up to you guys. You can set it up as a working group, so that you don't have to go through that formal process, and the report that's produced is sort of a recommendation to the Select Board. Or you can set it up as a committee. Most towns decide to continue the committee after the plan is ready, because the idea is that that group is the one that's responsible for monitoring progress and continuing to develop, you know, additional things to do over the coming years. So if it's a formalized committee, that's the advantage, is that it's already there, sort of in perpetuity at least, is the idea. But you can start with a working group, as, for example, Duxbury did. They later shifted to a more formal committee. But there's no hard rule for it, so whichever is preferred.
Yeah. So just to introduce everybody to Joanne. Joanne is an employee of Old Colony Planning, who is going to help shepherd this, this group through the process, ultimately have a recommendation for consideration at the end of this study. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what Joanne's role was and who she was.
All right, any other questions?
I would just say 12 is an awfully large group to try to bring together for a committee. I'm not opposed to the idea of having a large group, at least at the beginning, as a working group. Try to figure out if it, if it works, functions well, can meet, can figure out the scheduling and whatnot, before we make something more formal into a committee. That said, it looks like we have a great list of potential groups to be represented on this initial brainstorm, and that, that could be modified as needed. If we, if we realize this is way too big, or we realize it's just not the right group, we can, we can adjust that, so that we have that flexibility. Yeah, so we, if you, if you look at the suggested motion, you'll notice that we don't, we're not appointing any people by name yet.
Right.
I would assume people would apply or make recommendations to us on who to appoint to these various positions. Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
If this grant that is awarded, does it have criteria that we include everyone that you've listed here? Is there a certain criteria for their grant that requires everyone that's on this list to be a part of the working group or committee?
She said, I think, Joanne was shaking her head, no.
Okay, no.
Yeah, no, it doesn't, no.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
It's just, it's a big group, so it's just, I struggle with the idea of scheduling that, but I think it's optimistic.
I warned Holly. I will say that.
It's optimistic.
If I may, just on that point there, I think we found in our other communities that a lot of people don't. It's, it's a pretty intensive process. There are monthly meetings with lots of homework in between. So sometimes we get people who might skip a month or two, so it kind of helps having a bit of a bigger group to make sure that we still get the work done.
Okay. All right.
If I could, does it make sense to have anybody who's interested in applying, apply to the COA Advisory Board, and they could make a recommendation to appoint the individuals to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen ultimately appoints those, those individuals? That work? Are you okay with that, Ms. Chairman?
It would probably be something that would most likely be managed, I think, maybe more by Holly. You know, so I think that the Council on Aging could do some of the heavier lifting here, but it is intended to be an entire town initiative, which is why we have so many other departments that are on here.
No, I, I understand, Katie, I'm sorry. I just, I was thinking if an individual was interested in filling an open position, they could apply to the Council on Aging. Holly can make a recommendation to the COA Advisory Board, who could then recommend filling of each position by, to the Board of Selectmen. If that, if that process works, you guys can vet who you're suggesting be appointed to that committee or a working group.
I'm fine with that process, if Holly is.
So are we still talking about, are we calling this a task force committee?
I think we're gonna, no, I think we're gonna call it a age and dementia-friendly study working group.
Yeah.
It's long, but I think that's what we're gonna call it. At least to get started. We can readdress this, we can look at this again later. I don't have a problem with the idea of including potentially all these people, especially if it's a working group, because you have more flexibility. You don't have to worry about quorums and whatnot, so.
Yeah, so I would change it to the creation of a working group for age and dementia-friendly study in conjunction with blah, blah, blah.
Sure. But I like the process of vetting it through Holly or the advisory first and then to us. I think that's more efficient-
Yeah.
-for the members being added on.
But are we leaving all these other things in the motion?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, but just not the names?
Right.
All right, so.
And who on this Board of Selectmen would like to volunteer to be on this working group? Is it Tyler?
Probably. And he should reach out to the advisory to say he wants to be a part of it.
Yeah, right. I'd be willing to try. I just, we'd have to see time commitment-wise how it goes, but-
I'm actually willing as well, so I mean, I could be a backup for you.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, just all of us try to-
We could split it.
We're just gonna-
Jump in, jump out.
Jump in, jump out. Yeah. I just, I know we've, everybody's signed up for a lot of different things, so just try to spread them around a little bit.
Yeah.
And Tyler just got the, something.
Yeah.
The, what was it? The Planning Council?
Yeah.
I can't remember what it was, but it was-
Bold column.
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move the Board of Selectmen approve the creation of a working group for age and dementia-friendly study in conjunction with Old Colony Planning Council, consisting of the following members. I want to say up to the following members. Advisory, so that's the Council on Aging Advisory Board, selectman representative, the Council on Aging Director, the town planner and/or the town clerk, an emergency response representative, Board of Health representative, wow, this is on the list, representative from BID Plymouth, a community member with knowledge of dementia-friendly efforts, Kingston Business Association representative, school representative, clergy, faith group representative, and housing authority or Neighborhood Works Housing Solutions representative, to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen and recommended by the Council on Aging Advisory Board. Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye?
Okay.
A motion to appoint, Kim?
Sure.
That's nice. Okay.
And I'm willing to be a backup if you want to make-
If you want to do it, I'll just put you on it, but you're also doing the DPW one, so.
Oh, I don't care.
Just give everything to Eric. It's fine. If you want to do it, I'll move to appoint Eric Crone as the Selectman representative.
Second.
You're gonna raise your hand a bunch of times, I'm gonna sign you up.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye?
You can't say I didn't try.
Yeah?
It's all you, buddy.
No, that's great. Now you have to be-
All right, now, I will say, though, that is a very long list, and we may find that that's too long a list, and that's okay with the task force, because a working group, we can be a little more flexible. So, if we decide we need a committee at a later date, we may need a smaller list. Yeah, I think that was the idea, that we start large, knowing that some people may drop off for whatever reason. And in terms of a representative from any particular department, you all are welcome to take turns, whoever's available for whatever particular meeting that may be, that it would be you or another representative from the board or from a particular department, so.
Okay.
No pressure.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is an update on the FY '26 budget, but I'm suggesting that maybe we hold off until next week. The joint school committees met at 5:00 to discuss a shared cost budget. I don't know what the results are yet. That's gonna affect the budget. And then Silver Lake did get their excess and deficiency fund certified by the state, which is good news, and did receive-
Was it up over 2 million?
2.148, I think, or somewhere around there. So it was a good, good number that they're looking at using to offset operational expenses, which in the long run, it's like us using free cash to fund our operations, not a good idea. But at the same time, just remember, there are plenty of folks, especially Jason Frazier, working with the feds and our state government to look at redoing the funding formulas for regular education as well as special education, because there are towns all over our state that are looking at overrides just to stay funded, while at the same time, colleges are now free. They just announced today, Bridgewater State University is going to offer no tuition, no fees, no nothing, as long as you, you earn under 125. So that's the millionaire tax, funding free college, but not funding our K through 12 education. So there's a lot of pushback against the state, and we encourage you to contact your state representatives and have them take that education money, the 2.4 billion, and put it towards education.
Well, there were some things brought up at the Silver Lake meeting as well. What was that, last, no, two weeks ago, two weeks ago. It was last week of school vacation. One of them was some questions about why the E and D fund was over 2 million again, so they're looking into that. But also, there were some increases allowed for private schools and social education schools that were a lot higher-
That they didn't fund.
...than what we can actually fund-
Correct.
...in our towns. So there's no way to make up for that change, so that, that's another area that I think Jason is working with the state on as well.
Yep.
Others, too.
Yep.
And for people unfamiliar with Jason, he's very involved in the schools, and he's on the Silver Lake School Committee, and he's from Plimpton.
He's from Plimpton, yeah, Jason Frazier. He's a teacher, but he's also the, the president and mass association of school committees. Were you gonna say something?
Yeah, just to follow up with the, with the budget discussion, if there's anything anybody needs prior to next Thursday night, Kathleen would be happy to try to put together any information that the board needs to help you make a decision next week. So please feel free to reach out. We'll, we'll provide whatever you need to get to where you want to get to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, acceptance of donation to the Kingston Public Library and Council on Aging.
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the following donations. $2,400 from the Kingston Public Library Foundation Incorporated to the Kingston Public Library to repair the library's electronic sign. $25 donation from Robert and Melody Tosanari to the COA.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye?
I don't think you needed to read it, and then have me read it. You started, I was just cutting you off before you had to read the whole description.
I didn't even start it. It's fine. All right, so we also have a reappointment to the Kingston Education Fund trustees. We had William Alberti's term expired on June 30th, '24. He's requesting to be reappointed.
I move the Board of Selectmen accept William Alberti to the Kingston Education Fund trustees immediately through June 30th of 2029.
Second. All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye? Excellent.
2029 is a long term.
I know, but, yeah.
I have your turn.
All right, Town Administrators Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, we've talked about this a little bit already, but the Kingston School Department will be receiving an additional $555,000, and Silver Lake another $260,000, almost $261,000, as reimbursements for fiscal 2025 expenses incurred for the district's homeless and foster care. They'll be received, half of those funds will be received in April, the second half will be received in August, based on my conversation with the Department of Education, and the funds can be used at the discretion of the school committees. Our Ring Road Flood Mitigation Project has been awarded. That project should begin in the spring. I'm gonna be out of the office on vacation the next couple of days. I'll be back in on Monday. If anybody's looking for me, feel free to reach out by text, email, phone call, whatever, whatever is convenient. Nomination papers, to the chair's point earlier in the meeting, they're available now for all the different town elected positions. A detailed list of those are on our website. Nomination papers are due back by 5:00 Friday, March 28th. Be happy to answer any questions, anybody has.
Any questions? No? Comments? All right, any, any Selectmen comments before we adjourn?
I had a question, and we don't have to, it can be on the next thoughts, but thoughts about our meetings continuing in the pattern of the Tuesdays we have because of the music nights that we're trying to schedule for the rec department, our summer events. So I'm trying to not schedule the summer events at the same Tuesday.
Sue and I talked about this two or three weeks ago.
Okay.
And I provided to her at the time, the, the dates that the board would be meeting-
Yeah.
-throughout the summer, at least what was scheduled. So, I thought-
We can keep them like that.
And you can double-check her if you want, but I thought that she, unless the meetings had changed-
Well, that's what, that's what I want to make sure we're not, we're okay with what we have.
Yeah, I don't think we've, we haven't changed anything on our side.
No, and I don't think, Trish would have checked, but I don't think there's anything in the summer, you know, Fourth of July or things of that nature that have any conflict. So I think we're good.
That was it. I just wanted to make sure, before I went back to the rec.
The only thing is, we can't always predict when the special needed, meeting is needed, but we can try to-
For sure.
Right. Doesn't have to be on Tuesday. We could maybe make a different, different night.
Okay, perfect.
Friday, 8:00 p.m.
Friday, as long as it's not Tuesday.
Tell me about it.
Any other Selectmen comments? I got nothing from my end.
So?
I think we've been doing a good job. We've done great posting, social media, when our meetings are.
Try to stay off of them, social media.
Well, I think you had some good posts, you know, just informing people.
Trying to share information about how budgets are built, and what Prop 2 and 1/2 is, and some issues that every community is facing with this stuff. So, it's just, there's a lot of folks that just don't, they don't know. So-
Right.
-it's helpful to just try to share as much information as we can.
Exactly. And so next Thursday, our meeting is going to be, you know, discussing the potential override for schools that may or may not need an override. Also, you know, requests, staffing requests for the Police Department to bring their staffing levels up to more modern requirements. So we have some things to discuss next week about both of those items. So, and then obviously, longer term, we're gonna have to start planning and working towards a budget for the following year, because it's going to be just as much of a challenge. A lot of that is gonna hinge on, on state aid and-
If the laws change.
Whether the things change, yeah, things, things are changing there. So, we've, we've got some work to do. And as I've mentioned before, the, the local school committee had reached out, and they wanted to have kind of a working group. Not the whole committees meeting together, but certainly we could look at doing that, but, but really just keeping communications open between potentially just the chairs, the superintendent, maybe building principals, town administrator and whatnot. When we get to that point, I don't know whether, you know, we need to take a vote to have me represent, or just me represent as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I don't want to just assume, we're not there yet. We need to get through this year's budget, and it's certainly something we can, we can discuss later on. Not tonight, it's not on the, on the, on the agenda. But with that, our next meeting, we've got a meeting, as I mentioned, March 6th, which is a week from Thursday, so it's next Thursday to discuss the budget. And then our- our next regularly scheduled meeting on March 11th at 6:00 p.m. here. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.